Thank you all for coming down. This is a special work session for budget preparation for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. We're going to, we're going to jump right in. I'm going to ask, before we get started, for those of you that did come down, since this is budget season, if you do have any comments over what has been said, I'm going to ask that you wait till after the meeting, then I'll give you some brief moments, and I'm going to ask you, please, if you do have comments, to be brief. This is going to be a long process, but we also do want to make sure that if there is something important that needs to be said from somebody from the audience, that you do get that opportunity. So, I want to make you aware of that. Again, thank you for coming down. Tonight, we'll be covering the CIP five-year plan and the library. Did you guys have any specific questions? Did you care to go to the library to go first?
Um, well, were you ready? No, I'll go first. I kind of thought I was going to do that, so.
Okay.
I'm going to go through the information you have in your packet. One, you had one sheet that just does a review on the deficit fund balances that was loose at the front. And with that sheet, it shows the history of the fund balances going back to June 2011, to the June this last year, back in 2011, our deficit accounts were at 8,500,000 and have gradually gotten down to where this last year, they were at 836,000. And out of that, that, the main funds that are in there, that were those primary categories, the ongoing deficits that we didn't have a way to take care of, the last two that were on there were the Recplex at $191,000 deficit, and the Golf Course, 130,000 deficit. Debt Service, you see in there at 40,000. It had been, even though it didn't show as a deficit in previous years, it really was. It just wasn't seen as a result of having a lot of cash on hand from the battery company. What's?
Uh, federal mogul?
Federal mogul, with the debt. They were making their payments, and we had a significant amount of cash ahead of, that was paid in advance, or that we'd received in advance of the debt payments. So, when we paid off the remaining debt there this last year, it allowed that category to come in and be something that you actually saw, that deficit balance. But, we're on pace for this year, for the, as an example there, the Debt Service Fund should end up the year closer to 200,000 of positive cash. And that's been something that, over the course of the last few years, we've been trying to get that back to that point. The majority of the rest of the projects are deficit accounts that you see on there, are ongoing projects. The Depot renovations is with the Great Room, and that, at 85,000, we're going to be carrying a deficit there over the next couple of years. The group, the Friends of the Depot, has done a significant fundraising effort there, but the revenues that they're receiving, those were some donations to be done over the course of, I don't know, was that three, two to three years? So, as those come in, we'll be able to bring that deficit down. But, you do have to know that we do back that ultimately, for what, anything that doesn't get paid off, we end up being, bearing responsibility on it. The SMID was a timing issue. That was, we wouldn't normally have that happen, but somewhere with our accruals at the end of the year, we had to accrue back, or probably a revenue to this year that we had previously coded to last year that we paid out, would be my guess, or. I don't want to work in the world of accruals, but that was a timing issue, and that just...
We received it in 17?
It should have been for 16. Okay. So, we paid something that, regardless, it'll get worked out this next year, and we'll just give it less money to the SMID. The others, Masl is an ongoing project that we have revenues on hand to cover, just in a different account. The Division Street Rent Rise is one that we ultimately will pay for, pay off with TIF funds. We've already set up an internal loan, and also have the option to go into final, going out to a formal debt with this bond issue that we're looking to do this spring, instead of that internal loan, for that to cover. And the others are all very similar. The community redevelopment is addressing transite costs that came into this year for engineering fees, et cetera, that we'd incurred last year, but will be paid for out at, ultimately, TIF when we wrap up that project. So, we've made a lot of progress, and I think that's an important thing to celebrate as we move forward, and to make sure we keep in mind, we have gone, gotten a long ways down the road. With the accounts that are left, that, I mentioned the two primary ones that were some legacy deficits, the Recplex and Flint Hills Golf Course are scheduled to be paid off this year. So, we shouldn't be carrying any legacy debts into the next budget year. Any deficits will be similar to the, what the majority of the rest of these are, the ongoing projects that is, where it's primarily a timing issue between when a debt is incurred and when you have the payment mechanism on it occurring. So, that's just a big thing I wanted to make sure that we paid attention to. I wanted to go through a couple of things from my budget presentation letter that I didn't get to last time, that I missed. I mentioned with, and I'm not going to go too much, I'm not going to go line by line through this, but I do, did want to hit on a couple of things. I mentioned last time, hotel motel tax was lower. Other revenue streams that are similar, local option sales tax and gambling revenues, we're seeing some of the same trends occurring there. Gambling revenues were up about 30,000 from previous years, 2% or 3%. Well, we're now calling those to go back to what their long-term trends have been, because they, the revenues so far this year are back on that stream. Local option sales tax, we don't know how our true-up process will work. Part of the way with local option sales tax, something that's different with how that is done. They give, they do an estimate of what the, a forward estimate for the new year based off of last year's collections, and the estimate numbers that they gave to us this year, they will largely live by in what they pay out. The only reason they will make any changes is if they're, if it's significantly different. They hold a 5% of their estimated revenues based off of last year's collections in reserve. They will not likely make any change to our funding stream during the course of the year unless they are so far below revenue trends that they have to reduce that revenue stream. Now, the thing that can happen, though, is we move into a new year with local option sales tax. This last year, we received, the current year, we received, I think, $350,000 for a true-up payment? Since Stephanie isn't here yet, I was asking you, but...
I've been looking at numbers, way too many numbers.
I know, I look at too many numbers, too. We received 323,000 this year as a makeup, a true-up payment. Their expectation for about what that should be is in the $200,000 range. So, last year, our revenues were very strong, but we've also seen that be as low as, like, 14,000. So, we can have a revenue swing of about $350,000, give or take, in a given year, in local option sales tax. In fact, as they do, did their payments to us this year, they budgeted for us to have a reduction of about 90, 90, about $100,000 from last year's revenue. So, they thought we were going to have a reduction as we moved into this year, based off of what they were seeing for trends. We had the Manor property sell this last year, which I think most people remember.
Yeah.
There will be another $1.2 million payment that is expected to be made in this next budget cycle. What makes the most sense to me for how that gets used is to, with one of the projects that's coming up, most likely, the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, that we've budgeted to have paid for with TIF funds, to apply it to that project and reduce the amount of TIF borrowing that we would do. Just, rather than pay off an old deficit debt, I'd rather just reduce the amount of new debt that we incur. And that decision isn't here yet to be made, but it just, to me, it makes the most sense as we move forward in how we deal or address that.
Is there a penalty for us prepaying one of those bond issues?
I think that one, I don't know if that one in particular, Stephanie, we did refinance that, and it might be locked in for another couple of years, the Manor debt?
I have one.
Yeah, without looking it up. When we refinanced it, I assume it had a five-year, so I bet that we would have a penalty if we tried to pay it off at this point. But, it wouldn't keep us from paying one of the other debts off.
Yeah, well, I was specifically referring to the Manor, because that question had come up.
Yeah. One of the projects that's not on the CIP for next, this next year's five-year CIP, is from this last year. So, Parking Ramp, Washington and Six, with the parking ramp down at Washington and Main, with the cost overruns on that rehab, we have less funds available than what we originally budgeted. And I think that we under-budgeted the scope of the project for what should really be done at Washington and Six anyway. We have about 30,000 left. Nick and his group put together four different cost estimates on that, a basic, you're going to redo the entry into that and pave. That basic project looked to be about 115,000?
110.
110 is what I had in there. There also had the ability to put some different stormwater improvements, some green, either permeable pavement, or catch basins that would allow for some, for water to be caught there. Those were projects that were more in a $180,000 price range, and I also asked Nick to look at what it would take to put a second level on there, have an entry off of Six, as well as Washington, one on each level. A project to do something like that was in the, more in the $500,000 range, and I just don't see spending that money. I think it'd be a good project, but that's not what I have set up right now. What I'm recommending, and this project hasn't come to you, but I'm recommending that we pay for the base, base level to be done, use additional local option sales tax dollars to cover the shortfall between what we had budgeted and what it will take to get that done. Our cost drivers, we have a five-year pay package with our unions, 2.25% annually. We have it set to where we have capped the increase in costs on health insurance at 5% annually, and that's built into the budget. Our retirement systems, IPRs, the percentage that the city is responsible for has stayed the same since about 2012. I'm not sure exactly the exact year. MFPRSI, Police and Fire, the 411 system, has seen that. That percentage has gone up and down fairly dramatically over the years. Back in 2008, I think it was down at the 17% level, and it's been as high as 30%, or a little over 30%. We're, this budget for this next year sees that percentage decline slightly, from the 25.92% to the 25.68% amount. Property liability insurance is going up about 5% annually for us. We've budgeted in for non-union positions to be that same 2.25% increase, along with the transition table, similar to previous years, where those who are near, closer to the bottom of the range get a larger bump up to get up to the median point. I assume Venue Works will be one of the discussions that is held during the course of this year, and I encourage you to read through the notes that I have in there on that, as we, and think about, what are we looking at this cycle? We do have the option to send them notice, I think it's 120-day notice, if we were to desire not to continue that arrangement. But, we don't have an answer for what we would do differently, nor am I suggesting that they have done a poor job. I just want that out there as something that you can have as a perspective, and think about as we go through this budget cycle. Kind of already mentioned the lost. When it comes to our utility rates, sanitation, we've budgeted to go up 25 cents for solid waste, the base fee. We've been going up 25 cents, and we fully expect that we need to go up 25 cents each year moving forward. The reason that I say that, the recycling fee is on schedule and on pace, to go up 10 cents per month, that's included in that every year, and it did this year. The tipping fee out at the landfill is designed to go, or expected to go up a dollar per ton every year, as it is this year. Those are the two major cost components, along with our own personnel costs, as we see increases there, that impact what we have to do for rates within solid waste. In regards to sewer and stormwater rates, we're budget, the numbers that are presented to you, or will be presented to you, have a 3% increase, as we've done the last couple of years. Again, those are, that's lower than the 9% that we were seeing for annual increases when we were first reacting to the combined sewer separation notice, but it's what we fully expect that we need to do as we move forward, to be able to have ourselves in a position to try to do our best to pay for the mandated work that we have to do. Overtime for fire, it's in the notes. We budgeted in this, given this year, this fiscal year, 72,000 for overtime costs. We were at 170,000 last year, and we're very much on line to hit that figure this next year, or this year. We did increase overtime budget in fire control from 72 to 150 in the budget that's presented to you. Recplex operations, they've seen a shift in their participation in a couple of their leagues, just a couple of teams here and there in different leagues. This last year, they had one less tournament. This next year, they see being fully booked. But, that participation has impacted, at least in part, I can't say everything that impacts things, but having Fort Madison open a complex certainly changes dynamics of how our facility is used. To make a budget work there, the, what's being transferred over from hotel motel tax to support operations, we've been in that 35,000 to 40,000 annually that we've had to transfer over for, to support operations. We're looking to need to increase that to 70,000. That's a pretty good hit to the hotel motel tax fund, and one of the key drivers that made, made it difficult to be able to fund some other things out of hotel motel tax.
Can you elaborate on the reason, on the driver behind that going up so much?
We have lower revenues, and we have the same costs. When you have fewer people who are, you, I don't know if you want to address that at all in terms of teams and participation, Eric?
We can a little bit, I'll talk more in our presentation, but just for instance, the total number of league teams, which is during the week, are slow pitch softball, volleyball, soccer, flag football. We've gone from 340 teams in 2014, 325 in 2015, and 320 in 2016. We have seen some, the Fort Madison open their Recplex, and they have volleyball and softball, and that has seen some of the decline in those areas. Overall admissions, in 2014, there was 90,476 that attended the Recplex, 81,763 in 2015, and 76,217 in 2016. Some of that is due to a couple tournaments being canceled, that's a big impact, and just rain out, that's something we can't control. Or if they schedule it, and then they have fewer teams than they expected, and cancel the tournament ahead of time that we're not able to reschedule, and then the league teams, that has an impact on it, so.
But, that has, as we've developed a budget for this year, that has had a significant impact on how we've set aside funds. It's a difference, it's a change.
That question's coming up, just because we're entertaining some other things down the road.
Well, and I kind of wanted to point this out in regards to, as you have, start having talks about an indoor Recplex. The numbers that you have on a new facility be very comparable with a new pool. Your new pool will typically do its best its first year, and things go, slowly go down, especially if someone else builds one in the vicinity, then you see a significant change. I don't anticipate that if this indoor Recplex goes in, that you're going to see another one open up in Mount Pleasant, but your best years are typically your first few years, and you can see a change as things go on, and a facility matures over time. So, as you think about different facilities, the operating costs may be at one level for a period of time, but you can see those change as time goes on. And if you're going to commit to them, whatever level you're committing to, you have that long, not just the initial situation, but the potential for what can happen over time. And you have to be cognizant of that with any decisions that you're making. But, we're not going to, I mean, even with what a change like this is, it, we may not have to continue that over time, we may see that our numbers look to improve, but I don't want to budget on that, I want to budget on where we're at. It's still, this is a, when we look at what the Recplex does for the community, we see this as a very valuable input of funds, because of what it does for the community. And this is one of the things that is a direct beneficiary of having a Recplex, is the hotel motel tax. So. Both this sewer department, Mr. Fitting, are looking to, requesting an additional staff person that he needs to address as he goes through his budget presentation, as well as then the street and sewer distribution system that Nick needs to address during his presentation about what they're looking to do. For Don's department, he's looking at a full-time position to bring on. Nick is looking for two part-time summer positions, that, one in streets, one in sewer distribution system maintenance. So, look for that from their departments, if you're tasked with doing that. Behind my narrative, you had a couple of comparisons for how we look compared to other towns. This is for the current budget year, since I have no idea what people are looking at for taxes for this next year. The smaller comparison here, the first one, is just the community's 20,000 to 30,000 population. A couple of things that I'd note, the total levy where we sit is at 1594. The range for this subset is 1371 to 2073, an average of 1680 levy. One of the spots where we tend to be higher than the others is on our debt service levy at 380, we're above the average. So, that's, and that's somewhere that we're looking over the next few years to be able to bring back down. That is, for those who got to be a part of that process, and in 2012, as we were cleaning up deficit accounts, we ended up having to work through the 2011 debt issue that was backloaded through 2023, and then layer on the, taking care of some of those deficit accounts, and then any ongoing projects, we knew we're going to have to have a higher debt levy to work through. So, we're on, our plan is, as we get to that 2023 timeline where that debt issue comes off, to start to see us try to stair-step down from that 380 level down to about $3 on a debt service levy. Something to note on here, because of the values, the taxable value per capita, where you see us at that 26,000 of taxable value per person in our community versus an average of 31,000 in that subset, look at, you take a look at where the tax per person, we ask for an average property tax from each person in our community of $427. The average community is at 500. Only one of the communities in our subset is asking less per person within our community. And this is one of the hard things, if you have a low property value in your community, it really makes it difficult to provide a comparable level of service to what others are doing. And as you look at the next sheet, you get a better flavor of that. Here, with all the communities over 20,000, there's 22 of us, the average taxable value is 42,000 compared to our 26,000. That means they have 50% higher value than us to spread the revenues across. Only one community has a lower amount of taxes that they ask from, per person, out of this group. We are the second lowest tax on a per-person basis out of the top 22 communities across the state. That's not what people look at, though.
No, it's not. That is good information to...
But, it's something to keep in mind, because to provide a level of service, you know, when we, the way we have to do things in terms of, you know, when we do compensation, we are pretty much mandated to make sure that we're matching up with what our like communities are. And our like communities have a different ability to pay for it than what we do. So, it's just a, it's not, it's good, bad, or indifferent, it's just the, what we have to deal with.
The debt service levy, 380 is supposed to be our max, is that correct?
That's what ours is.
Yeah, and how did that get set?
What we did was, when we had to, back in 2012, when we were dealing with the, with our, trying to refinance the debts, we looked at what it was going to take to refinance those debts, and what property tax levy it would take to do that, and have it be consistent enough not to stop us from doing any work.
But, it's not a legal...
No, it's a, you can levy the amount necessary to pay whatever your debts are. And that's where you'll see...
That's why somebody's got $5 here.
Yep.
Bettendorf, I guess.
Yes, that's the amount necessary.
Okay. Thanks.
The next couple of sheets are just a different way of looking at some comparisons between communities. These are, again, the, our, the community's, the population 20,000 to 30,000 are like or comparable communities, and you can see they, what the current year's budgeted expenditures are for each of the, of us. The problem is, is that not all of us account for things the same way. Mason City, or, I'm sorry, Muscatine, as an example, has a, they have an ambulance service, right?
Yeah.
But, they budget for that as a special revenue, and it goes down in the enterprise fund as a, as a service there. We don't do that. Some places operate their sanitation in their general fund, we do it in the enterprise fund. A lot of these places, I'd say Mason City is one, if you look at their column, on page two, near the top, that other general government, they have a figure there of 4.8 million. That's a pretty big other.
Yeah.
But, all of their employee benefits and all of their insurance costs are in that spot. At least, I assume that's where all of them are, because they're not in their actual departmental budgets. So, when you try to make a comparison between, say, the... So when you try to make a comparison between, say, the expenditures that their police department has and what ours does, you're not comparing the same, you're not, you're not making a true comparison. Because we try to fully account for our expenditures that are associated with the police department, in the police department. And you'll see that there'll be some, there'll be different mixtures of what places do. So that, it just becomes really hard, this is something that you can use to give yourself some level of comparison between communities, but you also have to recognize that we don't all do things the same way or report things the same way. And, so why do you put it in this? Well, anyone can go and look this information up. So, you can go to the Iowa Department of Management and look up your, our information versus anyone else. You just, we need to make sure that people understand, just because you can look and make a comparison between places, doesn't mean you're getting a full picture of that true comparison.
Is there a, just to ask, is there a city that stands out that, that does, that is in our group, that does do business closer to what we do, that we have more of an apples-to-apples that you know of off the top of your head, or?
No.
Okay.
No, 'cause, I mean, everyone has some nuance, it's different. And, and really, what we're all being tasked to do is account for stuff, some of this is things, again, like when it comes to solid waste, the same solid waste service can be talked about in terms of an enterprise fund, or you can decide you do wanna have it in a general fund. I mean, when, those are decisions that each, each community is making, and they're, neither one is right or wrong, they're just different ways of making a decision to report it. Within the sheet, other sheets, the next ones, something that I'd point out with our, with what we had in here this last week, for the gross general fund revenues, expenditures, and then the net, one of them that stands out as being way different is Venue Works or the Auditorium. And that really has to do, we have to record all of their expenditures on our books, we did not have high enough figures to do that last year. So at the end of the year, as we're booking their entries, we're ending up being well above what we had had on our system. The net still works out the same, it's just we needed to increase on our books both the revenues and the expenditures to get to where we're showing numbers that are truer to what we have to do. Is that fair enough, Stephanie? And you'll see that as you look at the net, which is a third of those sheets, the general fund expenditures, net of grants and fees, under Culture and Rec, near the bottom of the page on the Auditorium, we're budgeting for the net to be three hundred and sixty thousand, a little less than what the last couple of years have been. And it really is pretty difficult for us to know during the course of the year how that's gonna happen. We end up booking all of their entries at the end of the year, so we don't have a really good flavor for how we're doing during the course of the year till we reach, get those entries in.
We get the financials.
We get some of their financials, but we don't book any of it into the system until August or so. And, moving on, did you have any questions on those sheets, or did you wanna highlight anything as you've had them?
Looks like everybody's good.
So, the Auditorium expense, even though we have Venue Works working, but it's, it's still up.
Correct. Now, as, the Auditorium for us, we, if you go back and look at what our net cost to run the Auditorium has been over the years, back in two thousand ten, it was, our net cost to run it was three hundred and twenty thousand or so, somewhere in that neighborhood. Two thousand eleven was close to the same, and it, that year might have been when it started to go down. We get, we were down into the two hundred and ninety thousand range two years in a row. But when we were down at that lower net cost, we had a very skeletal, skeleton crew, we had positions, one or two, maybe two positions that were open, that we weren't, that we weren't filling. And we were not doing, we had no one there that was available to do any type of scheduling.
Didn't we have city staff helping out during that process a little bit, too? I wanna say that we had.
I don't know about that, I just think that we, at that point, the person who was managing the facility was, that position had come open, is that true? Or which positions was it that we didn't fill?
I mean, at the end, we just had two maintenance people there.
Yeah.
The smoking people were part-time and they were...
And we had, before that, we'd had enough, three to four, were we at four at one point there, or no?
Three full-time.
Three full-time and then part-time. And then we were down to two full-time prior to us closing it down. So, when we look at years where we were netting our costs below three hundred thousand, we weren't staffed the way we needed to be. If we were to look at maintaining the staff level that we had back in two thousand eleven and what our net cost was, inflate out with the change in employee costs that would occur with moving the salary matrix up, we'd be close to that three hundred and fifty thousand net cost range. It'd be probably less than what we're doing with Venue Works. So Venue Works has not saved us any money. It hasn't cost us a tremendous amount of money. But, part of the goal that we'd had was to try to maintain our existing expenditures with that contract. We've gotten a lot more entertainment than what we were, than what we saw in that facility, we have fewer weddings. So, that's, that's a hard one to evaluate, what's the right thing to look at moving forward with how the facility operates. I don't know if that's giving you enough background for that.
Looking at the anticipated budget, then, on the Auditorium, you're talking revenue of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, and then expenses in nine nineteen, so we lost about two hundred and sixty-some thousand.
Three hundred and sixty thousand.
And I subtracted six fifty-six from nine nineteen, minus that. Pretty good numbers, I flunked accounting.
She'd do that, that's the right number, Bob.
So, I don't know what you've done on those, she'd have to look in what...
That's all right.
We, we probably need... Oh, your net there, there's a difference, that's not what you're looking at.
Yeah, it's the other...
Because when, part of the revenues that we record in there is property taxes that we levy. We don't, so, when, when we, any of the funds or any of the departments where we have property tax that we levy, they count as revenue on the revenue sheet, but if we net, that net sheet there is net of grants and fees. We're not trying to net out property taxes, 'cause I wanna show what's supported by property taxes on that net sheet. So it's not gonna be, as you look at, as you look at the revenues in a given department, when the revenues do include things such as property taxes, not very many of the departments have that, but those that do aren't, aren't, that's not gonna be a true net out like that.
That takes a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yep.
That's why that comes out that way.
Yeah.
I, with all my comment down at this time.
Yeah, library is gonna be the same, we have a levy for, for the library as well that wouldn't net out against their expenditures on that net sheet.
There is, just so you know, I mean, from, from what I'm getting, there is a growing concern with Venue Works and the Auditorium, and how we're going to be able to maintain, maintain that in the future. That's, that's, that's concern, I think.
Which is part of the reason I put in your notes, the process for, if you were to want to make a decision not to continue that, you do have that option this budget cycle. This budget cycle is the beginning of the, of the period where you can start making some decisions on that. The way the contract reads, once, once we complete, reach June thirtieth, essentially at any time, you can give a hundred and twenty-day notice of your desire to terminate the contract. It was a five-year contract with an option to renew beyond that. This is the end of the third year. So that is one of the decisions that you'll have to, if you wanna see a change, you'll have to have a discussion about that. In terms of the Auditorium itself, Venue Works plans on, we have them scheduled for January thirtieth on your set of budgets, so. And we've also talked with them, had a discussion with them, just to try to give them a context of where we are this cycle, just in regards specifically to some of the concerns at a community level, about other issues that we'd like to try to address if at all possible, and just creating a different dynamic for how do we, how do we deal with things. Other, other funds that you can see a change in that, the net, probably the other one that stands out to me is engineering. We budgeted less reimbursement in this account than what we've done in the past from projects, and we have a higher cost burden. We brought, when we had, lost a couple of positions this last year, we replaced those two positions with more, with, with people at a higher pay and more experience. I hope that that works out fairly well for us. What I can say about the dynamics within our engineering department, it's been a major positive, just in terms of operationally. But that is a difference of how our operations are running down there. Within, no, I guess in one of, another risk I'll throw out there for this cycle, it's been out there the last couple of years, what happens if backfill isn't there? And that's something that we need to be cognizant of as we move forward. There's no, the way that the funding formula was done when the property tax bill was, was approved, three years ago, four years ago, that was set to have, to hold cities effectively harmless for a benefit that the state mandated on us to give. And it was, the way it was set up is that that was gonna be an ongoing allocation to cities. For us, it amounts to about four hundred and twenty thousand annually, but it wouldn't be the first time, if they were to do away or limit backfill, it wouldn't be the first time that something that was promised from the state was eliminated.
I think it's a guarantee, that's the way I'm going into this, this cycle, is that money's not getting backfilled.
When the four-eleven system was set up originally, the retirement system for police and fire, that had a guaranteed funding from the state, they increased the benefits that were there, and because of the increases that they were putting in, they recognized that they were doing that, they said they would pay for that, essentially, is two and a half percent of benefit costs. And when they hit a budget shortfall, they took that away and put that on us. When they gave the machinery and equipment, when they took that off of taxation back in the nineties, they promised to make up that shortfall, and when they hit a budget problem, they took that away. So it's a matter of time before that hits. But that's a risk that we just need to be cognizant of and note, and just pay attention to. That's something that, at any given time, can be an issue we have to deal with and address. I've taken forty-five minutes to get the CIP, that was what was on the agenda for tonight. The majority of the projects that are on the CIP, and the equipment specifically, the equipment will leave up to the departments to kinda go through what they're looking to do, and like Don for the improvements down at the sewer plant, it makes more sense for him to address that than for me to say something stupid about what he's looking to do, when I don't really know the improvements that, as well as he does. You have two, or several different ways of looking at our CIP, there's a project summary at the front. This is my spreadsheet that I use to track projects. If you look on there, some of the different buildings and facilities to start with, you'll note that we have the police building renovation in for this next year, three and a half million Well, that's more than what my Hershey's Kisses were.
I didn't get a kiss, you're not getting any of this.
I see there's a kiss in front of you, actually, some, someone gave to ya.
He stole it.
He stole it. A priority project that Eric has on here, Mason Road Trail, the sidewalk, that's one that he's, that we do have funding to, to get that sidewalk along Mason Road, that will help to get kids off of the street, walking to school. That's in two thousand nineteen, and I know people would like to see that occur sooner, but that is state funding that has, that isn't available until then.
It's the federal fiscal year eighteen.
Federal.
By the time you get awards and grants, it's probably the summer of nineteen.
Yeah, so federal eighteen doesn't, fiscal eighteen begins October two thousand eighteen?
Yeah.
So, and getting a project online to do something. Something that, Doug, I'm not sure if you're addressing, electronic ticketing, the handheld unit?
Yeah, I...
So that'll be something for, to assist Vicky with her operations, that he'll be addressing. There's an area in here that's shaded on that sheet. I have that shaded, just to give an idea of the projects that we pushed, that I had to push out from the year that they had, were originally requested. And if you go to the third sheet on that, there's a, after the total by year, there's a set of projects that are not funded in the year desired. I wanted to put in there, so you could just see, see the year that each of those projects was originally desired to be done in, so that you can have a comparison there to make to, then that highlighted area on the other page to see where they got pushed back to to fit within our funding streams. And then I have one that I put not funded. And I just struggled with, with Eric, with Eric's department's request, I think I understand what they're trying to do is establish an endowment fund. I just struggled to see where I could fit that into putting, putting it to a level of some of the other projects that, that they were requesting to have done. Something that is different in here, and I think, I'll let Eric address, for vehicles, nuisance with what, what, why you're looking at two vehicles there, that has, well, it has to do with the two that we'd had leased, the two Priuses, and how we move forward as those come off lease this next fiscal year.
Can we back up a second here?
Yeah.
This three hundred and fifty dollars for indoor Recplex is the Weingard money, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I'll go back to that in a second, 'cause I shouldn't have skipped over that. And building inspections, we've used hand, hand-me-down vehicles for our inspections department, but I don't know if you've noticed the Ford Taurus that we, that they have that sets aside, I don't know if you've noticed how little it ever leaves, as, it, too often when it does leave, it ends up being towed out to property maintenance to be, or vehicle maintenance to be worked on. It's just, it needs a new vehicle, and for them to have a vehicle that they can use as, instead of their own, on a job site, they need something that, at times, they're driving somewhere that isn't the easiest to get to, too. As you mentioned up above, a couple of those development, we've received a couple of different assessment grants, those are federal grants from the EPA. One was the four hundred thousand, we had an announcement on over the summer or spring for doing assessments of properties in a downtown area. We received also an announcement this last week, about a week and a half ago, for an additional two hundred thousand dollar grant to develop plans for the reuse or marketing of facilities that have gone through the assessment process. plans for the reuse or marketing of facilities that have gone through the assessment process. Is that a fair statement, Eric? Or do you want to help me on that?
Yeah, the assessment is to evaluate for environmental contaminants in the planning, airwide plannings to evaluate reuse options and better use options for vacant properties and lots.
So we've budgeted those, the, the assessment grants to be a project that lasts over three years. And the planning over a two-year cycle. Again, those are all federal funds, no local match. We've just made an estimate of how that might be spread out over the course of that timeframe. The riverfront flood protection improvements, you see how we're staggering out the, those sales tax projects. Those are again, all backed by sales tax that we have to bond locally and then will pay, are set up to pay off the bond payments from the collections we have from the, the sales tax growth that. And that is the state's portion of sales tax collections that pays for that, not local option sales tax.
I think that's important to say again.
One that I don't know if Nick was planning on talking about, so I will hit on the parking lot resurfacing. The parking lot, Main Street and Valley on the south side of that intersection. The two buildings at the south end of that are scheduled to be demoed sometime in, in the next few months and transitioned over to us. We'll have to pave that. So we've set aside 50,000 to do the paving and join that into our existing parking lot there. And then, as you noted, the indoor rec facility. Absent knowing a whole lot out of what may or may not occur, this is a project that is not a city project. But I fully expect that we'll have a, that the request that ultimately does come to the city on the indoor recplex will, will ask for a funding amount that is at least the amount of the funds that were donated to us for this purpose. And it would make sense that we would put that money into the project. The second page, some equipment that I would notice or note. Nick has put in here four different flood protection projects. Now, as we start talking about having a flood wall, we have to have some way to haul those panels and store them. So the, the majority of that is, you see trailers, then some miscellaneous equipment to outfit or equip those trailers to handle holding the panels that will be part of the project. The project, I think itself would envision paying for the panels as part of that project, but not a storage such as these trailers. And he's looking to use the Morton Building that's down along the riverfront on a temporary basis for the storage of those trailers. I don't know that that's the best place. I don't know if we have another place to do it. Yeah, so the, the goal long-term is, is the next phase of the project happens in 2020 to 2021. To have the, where those pump houses are being built. Have a, a storage shed that is accommodated within or attached to the pump house to, to have as a storage site for that. Payment out of those, we have funds, well, we have funds that are in, that we've we've built up a somewhat of a surplus as we've gone through flooding, past flood accounts or issues where we've been able to get reimbursement for expenses that have occurred in the, in the general fund. We've put all of those reimbursements though into our miscellaneous flood account. So that is a, and we've used that to do a couple of other minor flood projects over the last few years. And it makes sense to use that to the extent possible for flood-related purposes. One of these, a telemetry, I, piece of equipment would come out of local option sales tax. Eric increased my cost with that pump house, and I think that it's something I'd hope that you highlight what's going on and what the problem is that you're having out there at the golf course during your presentation. And really, I guess that you get down into the streets, we've tried to break out the different projects that are going on. I don't know that I need to go through these as much as letting Nick go through them when he gets to them. But out of these projects, we have several, if you want to be able to make sure that you can highlight the ones that are being funded through the region. We have several of these projects though that are TIF funded. On this list, the Agency Street Improvements east of Highway 61 has a TIF portion for doing our, our portion of that project. I'm sorry, yeah, Agency Street Improvements east of 61, that. The only grant that we have on that is on the signals, traffic signals themselves. The remainder of that project, we're scheduled to do TIF, and we're looking to borrow that funding in this, in the next couple of months as we, with this next bond issue. The Agency Street Rise is associated with GE. Widening that corridor over to West Burlington Avenue. Our portion of that would be a TIF, would be done with TIF. I would note, we do, out of the street department, we've set aside to do both LED light replacements on an ongoing basis. And ADA trans, that shows that ADA transition plan. We have a requirement to go, to be fairly systematic about getting curb cuts done around the community and to make sure that those are, all meet ADA standards. And part of that effort, you know, we built that into most, all of our asphalt overlay projects where we do those street improvements. We do the, the intersections as well. This is setting aside a different amount, just specifically to cover additional ADA, additional ADA compliant curbs.
So when Nick talks, gives his presentation, he's going to talk about the street rehabs and?
He gets to talk about that. And so hopefully, he's got a five-year plan on how to do it. One thing I would note out of that, you can see like for the, our, our general resurfacing, reconstruction rehab program on those five years, there's one year that's not funded. We have nothing in.
He's going to be my question.
But if you look at the projects that are going around it, we've got improvements. Mount Pleasant Street has an HMA resurfacing project. Agency Street has two separate ones budgeted. And you still have the Seal Coat Program going on. So even though we've got it, we can only afford the fund so much at a given time. So doing these specialized projects keeps us from being able to be in a position to borrow for the, that general street resurfacing. And really what is taking its place in this budget cycle is rehabbing the US Bank Building. Borrowing the money to do that, the 2.2 million. We can afford with our tax levy. I mean, our goal there is to get down to about a $3 tax levy. Paying off debt in about 10 years. Well, that means we can afford to bring on about 2 million annually of debt. So if we take on 2.2 million this year, and then what, what we can afford to do as we go into out years, you have to, we just need to be cognizant of. So it'll all, the majority of it will go into street projects in the, in the other four years. And of course, we have our ongoing sanitary sewer projects, sewer separation work. So Nick gets to talk about the sanitary sewer and the wastewater treatment plant will be done. Behind my three sheets there. I'm not going to go through the next set. But what you can see as you look at that, it has the projects and funding sources done by department. It breaks them out. So here you can see, for instance, the different airport projects. We have one airport project that we have agreed to fund a portion of, and that's a major rehab that they're looking to do in fiscal year 20. Out of that, we're, we have an agreement to pay about 513,000 which we'd be covering out of Geo, have to bond for, or borrow for to cover. But you can see as you look at, not only by the departments here, you can see how we'll end up coding them or what our funding source will be on them. It breaks that out. Again, that example with the airport, what's going to be Geo bonds, what's going to be a federal grant, and what's going to be an outside entity. The outside entity on that is West Burlington and a portion from Des Moines County. So it doesn't always necessarily identify who the outside entity is, but, but though each of the projects has, well, if it has an outside entity, they're, they just have some other source. Not only do we break it out by department so that you can look and know what equipment to be thinking about as each department makes their presentation. But behind the breakout by, by department is then. Great, I've gone too far, a breakout by funding source. There's 10 pages of by department. And then you get to the projects by funding source, which is more like five pages. But here you can see what's being funded. As an example, the third one down, general obligation bonds, lists out the different projects by year that we'll be looking to do general obligation bonds. And you'll see in there, not, the, the highest dollar ones are all those, the ones that are associated with the flood wall. We have an outside funding source that we, that is hopefully adequate to cover all of the debt on that. But this still counts against our debt limit, and we have to do the borrowing ourselves. And then you have the column right below that, general obligation bonds that are TIF-related projects. So as you look through, you can see how the source of funding for each of them. So we overwhelm you with paper. Any questions on our, this, this CIP? Again, I, the majority of the, of it, hopefully you are able to address with each of the department heads covering their, their pieces of, of what they're trying to accomplish. The hardest part of getting this all to work, for them, those that don't have an outside funding source and we're trying to get them accomplished, are two main sources of funding these, well, three. One's borrowing, the Geo bonds. But otherwise, it's either local option sales tax or hotel motel tax that we use to fund this. And so what, what I wanted to make sure you had in here too was a breakdown of those two funds to see behind the CIP, you have the sales tax fund. The first sheet is what goes in the budget document. And after that is off of our, our spreadsheets, our Excel sheets that, where we try to look at how are we fund, how can we take the projected sales tax collections that we'll have over the next five years? Meet our obligations for different pieces and, and then what can we afford to fund for projects? So on that sheet, if you want to take a look at that, the, not the first one that will end up in a budget document. But the second one. We, it has a beginning balance going along the top. We come into, we're looking to come into fiscal year 2018 with 600,000. If you look on the back of that page, at the very bottom, you'll see the ending balance. We're looking to end with 629,000. And the goal is to be at 15% carryover balance. We're not quite there. But we're close. And, but you can see then through the years, how are we doing? There are years where we're above and years where we're below. But by, over a five-year period, we're, we're staying, we're looking to be at, above it at the end of five years. So what my goal is, is we put together these, of funding, funding of different projects or pieces of equipment, how do we do it in a way that doesn't put us in a position where we're not maintaining that balance over time?
Can I ask you a question about the Economic Development Subfund? Who represents us on that committee, the Economic Development Committee? Andy Duss?
We have not met in a long time.
So it shows a balance of 171,000 and we're putting in 70,000. And so are we, are we using it currently, Stephanie? Or is anything going with that? I don't know, maybe that's something we could look at, whether we really need 70,000 or not.
In previous years, this had, if you look at the note there, it says 5%. Expected revenue allocation 5%. We're not doing anywhere near 5%, that. When I did this, originally did the spreadsheet, was at a time where we were doing 5%.
And in a couple of years, when I was on that committee, we weren't doing 70,000 either. It seemed we were less than that.
Uh, you were, we're, we're 50,000 the last couple of years. Before that, it was up 220,000, I think, the highest year.
When I was on there, it was 50,000.
But that project, or that is something that it certainly is worth discussing. We don't have a lot of activity, but I think what the main design on there is if you have a major project come along, you have funds, adequate funds set aside to be able to, to be of any consequence.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's, I think that's probably the biggest thing that the chamber would talk about. But what is that balance? I don't, I don't know. I mean, the last project we had that we did a, a match on was Shears. And that was like $15,000, I think. And that was a year and a half ago or more.
We've used that fund for things that were, maybe you'll stretch on whether they really should be used for that.
Was, did, did we fund the study for the electric out of that? The hydroelectric?
Yes, yes.
Was one of the major projects. Did we pay for the downtown quiet zones out of that, or is that separate?
Are there maybe some projects that we could look at funding with that balance for something that maybe we don't have the money for?
You could certainly do that.
I'd like to look into that.
That's certainly something that you can look at. But here, I wanted to show you, as we talk about projects, what are the other things that we're, that we're committed to covering out of here too? The debt service on the B note, B's note. I think that goes through 23. I think it goes through 23. And local option sales tax, by the way, ends in 22. Subject to another vote. With, other than that, half of it, we send to the general fund for property tax relief. You see in here, additional property tax relief, and that's a figure that's growing by year. To cut, to maintain operations essentially. At some point, that becomes, I mean, it's, it's a problem. At some point, it becomes a major problem. We fund 20% of our patrol division. It says eight officers. I think that's just over eight, the way we're set up. But we fund 20% of our patrol division out of local option sales tax, along with all of the replacement vehicles and, and equipment associated with that. We cover, we send to the general fund a subsidy for engineering for our GIS system that's used both by public works, essential, and by development departments, or probably the primary users of that. But I mean, it's available for all of us. or probably the primary users of that. But, I mean, it's available for all of us. And then our IT expenditures within the city is funded here. That includes this, what we're working on right now as an example, is replacement of the phone system, which is a majority of that, along with the replacement of any computers that need done in this. And all the equipment for the network itself. This next year's major project, Stephanie, are you going to get to the accounting, or do you have enough funds to do it? So depending on how, if this funding is adequate, it's an upgrade with our accounting system. And one, our accounting system is divided into two components. Same vendor, the older component of that is what's considered a legacy system. The support level on it is, and are they doing any updates to that now or no updates?
And that, and that does them all, doesn't she?
The other part, the other problem with that is that the two components don't speak to each other. So they speak to each other on a limited basis. So they're like a couple that's, that needs to go to counseling. So, and it, that, I mean, that, that is a significant issue. They're able to work through it. But getting the two systems to talk together, and I don't know what the two systems are. Your HR side is different from...
We have a receipting, cash receipting system, and that's the old system.
So cash receipting is the old system, but it doesn't marry into the other. So that's probably, that's, if they can get to it, that's their major project for this next year. Well, it's, the problem is, is that do they have enough funds? We're going into this, for example, this year, the funds that we have set aside in order to accommodate getting the phone system done, you're putting off any computer replacements.
Isn't, isn't that funny? The accounting department doesn't know if they have enough funds. Something's, something's not quite right with that.
So anyway, you see that those are some of the operational transfers that we do before we get to the expense transfers for actual projects below. And these projects, the expense transfers that are listed there below, at the, the bottom half of that sheet, are for CIP items. And on the backside, as you're looking, we, we, the other two components that we fund out of here, economic development and then community field, we have an agreement to put fifty thousand aside annually through...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. And I think that agreement did run through twenty-two to match up with the end of the expiration of sales tax. Kind of makes sense? And hotel motel fund. Hotel motel, we're budgeted to bring in nine hundred thousand this next year. Out of that, the base, base piece that we have to make sure that we cover is our contractual arrangement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a, it's a formula, thirty percent of the first seven hundred thousand collected and four hundred thousand of anything over seven, or forty percent of anything over seven hundred thousand collected. So depend, if, if revenues come up higher, we pay more, them more. We just have, we have to match that formula. Auditorium improvements. This has been seventeen thousand in previous years, in the current year. And we're looking to, we're wanting to increase that to twenty-four thousand. We have a, besides base equipment in there that needs to get taken care of and general maintenance that, and the last one that came up was elevator that we didn't have enough here to cover. We know that the, the major thing coming up is HVAC unit there is, it's, it's getting close to that point where we'll have them, very likely have a major cost that goes with it. So we want to make sure that we've started to get some additional funds set aside to handle it specifically as a project along with other needs that come up down there. Riverfront improvements, essentially that is a transfer that we, we make to the general fund to cover our costs associated with maintaining the riverfront. Park and Rec, we fund capital, we set aside for capital items within Park and Rec. Art and cultural assistance, fifteen thousand. We have three major pieces that we fund with that. And since, do you have that in here yet? Art Guild is twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty, and it's been that for several, several years. They had a request to increase that to eighteen thousand, which I didn't budget to approve. The Symphony has been three thousand a year, and we're looking to continue that. And the municipal band, we haven't always funded this. We have funded it in some years. And they had a request in here to do three thousand a year. And I, I thought, thought it made more sense to, to consider doing that. And I did put that in there, subject to, if you wanted to kick it out, you certainly can, but it...
Wasn't that just, this one year, for one year request?
They, they, they would like to see that every year. They make a request each year for this. And their request is...
They're a blessing, they're a blessing to the city. They really are.
It was, it was one of those things that we cut back there when we were looking for ways to cut money. And they found that they could raise the funds on their own. But I thought this was a special year, they had a special anniversary year or something.
The first one they did was a special year. And since then, it's been, it's been each of the last two years, I mean, they, the last three years, they have asked for the same amount each year. That's certainly one, if you were wanting to eliminate, can be done.
I don't have any problem with that.
Community field, we set aside the forty-five thousand. We cover their utilities. What else do we cover out of that? They have an, an association fee for about six thousand a year. We hadn't, they agreed to, to cover that on their own for three years, three years ago. We're at the end of that and they're, will be expecting us to start paying that again. And it seemed like there was a third item that, besides utilities, that came in that. Like, I just can't remember if I'm saying that wrong or not. But it, that's the total of what we, we fund out of there for that. And then special projects is essentially the remainder. And if you turn and look on the backside of that sheet, you can see for, Stephanie is included in here, what the different projects are. At, along the top, you can, the budgeted expenditures has that fee for the Convention Visitors Bureau. Rec activities, I didn't mention what we do there. That's essentially a, a transfer to the general fund to support operations. It covers our costs associated with running the parks and the pool, et cetera. The Recplex, you see there increased to the seventy-five thousand from where it had been the last few years, more in the four, thirty-five to forty thousand range. Baseball Association, what we've paid for the debt service, the audit, the three different cultural pieces. Our support to the general fund for maintaining the riverfront. We do set aside annually money for the, the Renewable Energy Committee, five thousand dollars. And they have a little pool of projects that they've done out of that. We maintain a balance for them. Covering a Hux Harbor note, that goes back a few years to when the pool was done out there. And we have, I think, two years left of repayments on that. And then we've set aside, Eric started this last year, setting aside five thousand into trail maintenance. As we get more and more trails and they start to mature, we've, we've decided we need to make sure we have some funds set aside to do repairs as they come up. And the rest of these are then going to be projects. No, not quite all the rest, huh? You got the Bridge Run match. We put aside six thousand annually for that. And then Eric, do you, people have the choice when they go through the Bridge Run to don't quit that, designate that towards one of three projects typically?
Yeah.
And what, what are those?
Well, we're looking at contacting and seeing what the different interest level is. We haven't had a participation from the other groups, so we're looking at that this year. One is the pool. It's been the YMCA Domestic Violent Shelter and there's one other I can't think of offhand.
Hope A... Young House.
Young House Family Services. So that's something that we're looking at evaluating as well.
Okay. And then auditorium improvements, as we kind of mentioned before, how we have the sub account for that, it's listed on the bottom. And we have a balance in there, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That is right about fifteen percent. And as we tried to allocate where we could afford to do projects moving forward, we, the projects that are listed on the CIP that are funded with hotel motel tax, given these other commitments that we have, puts us at about, we're just under where we need to be actually. The third, the, the final year, we end up about twenty thousand too low, which tells me one of Eric's projects that's funded in fiscal twenty-two. Right now, it wouldn't be able to get funded. But the other years, we all track right at that hundred and forty to hundred and sixty thousand carryover.
So this nine hundred thousand is your conservative number?
Yeah. And as you, as you think through, I don't know if that's conservative enough or if it's too conservative. Our collections last year were nine hundred and ninety thousand. We're on track this year through the first quarter to be at about eight hundred and seventy. So I, I'm, I want that to be fairly realistic. And what I don't want to do is, I, I hope that I'm setting at a level that we don't over commit to projects.
Okay.
And Eric does know, and we have told him, they need to make sure that as we go through this year and then again next year, depending on where these revenues track, he's got to figure out what's his order of priority for what gets eliminated.
Do you think that, I mean, are you comfortable with that number?
Well, I...
Because, I mean, I, I'd much rather just lower it right now, just because...
I, I, we, it's, it's hard for me to make a determination on that. I mean, next year, you're, you're making a forecast out what happens next year. By the end of next year, we'll have another motel online that's collecting revenues. It won't be for the full year, but it'll probably be for about half of that year. I, I don't know where to input that level of impact. I might be underestimating what the level of impact of that new, new hotel has on what collections can be. I certainly know that the impact of the fertilizer plant is lower now than it was a year ago and will most likely be less next year. But we still have what's going on with the Recplex that, that drives a lot of the business and just normal day-to-day activities for everything else too. I, I don't know. I, I do still want to make sure that he does have an understanding that as he goes through this, they, if they, if the revenue tracks below it, they do lose projects. So they, they still have a level of prioritization for having to pull things off. Yeah, we have the, we have the ability to adjust. Again, though, that's where, as we're presenting, trying to, I was trying to figure out how to make the, the depot work, doing the, the north end of that. If we commit to a project like that, there's no undoing a commitment like that. Our internal stuff, we can, we can move around as we need to.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Any other questions? Otherwise, I've talked for an hour and a half.
You're long-winded, Jim.
We know that. I see you had pizza over there where you wanted to do something with that before you had Rhonda talk.
Yeah, let's take, let's take a quick, quick break and then, and then get back after it, so. Kids, you guys help yourselves. I got some for everybody.
That's the nature of this. If, who bought that?
I think Sean.
I think it was him.
Yeah.
Probably Sean.
Pretty cool.
Most likely.
I think we'll be out of here by five-thirty.
What, you want to be out of here by five-thirty?
Let me say that, you sassy. They're picking on me, they are. Now I'm supposed to go to a birthday party, even if I can't make it, I can't pick it, so I'll let my wife know that.
Think the pressure's on, right?
Pressure's on, right?
Yeah.
Boy, that's a lot of numbers, Jim.
Which piece of that?
We didn't progress yet on that.
Check with Charlie. They sent everything into the EPA cooperative agreement. We'll check with Charlie tomorrow. They got a clearance on it for phase ones. The phase two required this cooperative agreement. They sent everything in last week. They signed everything, so we'll check with Charlie tomorrow on that. They were thinking a week or so to the EPA. Phase first. Oh, okay. I was going to say yesterday.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't be offended there, but I'm going to wait till after.
Trying to be real.
Yeah, everyone had it.
Yeah.
Got some light fixtures. Bless the Lord. I'm asleep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they had some stuff around that one.
So hey, when you eat, man? Hey, you're doing it in slow motion. I was trying to help you out, man. I'm trying to do you a favor. You don't appreciate nothing.
First two, basically first one, I could use one bay, the full depth. I've got another one, maybe. It works out right. If no one uses the back part, what's the... I like the shop.
Oh, yeah.
Actually talking to the other one about restaurant.
God almighty.
Yeah.
Maybe second day, back to kitchen.
Okay. The open glass, yeah. Yeah, all nice. It's exciting. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's kind of been the key downtown. It's a lot of interest. It's just, is the owner of the building willing to fix it up? Yeah. Yeah, there always seems to be the interest. It's just whether their owners are willing. Yeah, there always seems to be the interest, it's just whether their owners are willing to allow them to fix it up, or fix it up themselves, get the ten minutes.
No, I've, I've, I'm willing to do it, we'll do it, or they'll benefit, it's a wrench.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, you crazy kids. We're gonna ask you to collect yourselves and find yourselves. I could've told you that, brother. Mrs. Freevert?
All right. Well, good afternoon. I am gonna take just one brief moment before I start on my presentation to introduce our board members who are here tonight. You guys appoint them, but you don't always get to meet them, so I want to make sure you, you know who they are. I know I don't really need to introduce Jerry Parks, everyone knows Jerry, for different things that he's involved in, but Jerry is our board president and also the longest-serving member of our current board. And then we have Becky Godfrey, who's here, and Becky was here in November for the annual report that I gave, so thank you for coming back to another meeting. And then Sarah Goff also is here tonight, so thank you to you guys for coming for the meeting and for volunteering to help govern the library. It's a big, big job, and I'm glad that they're willing to do that. So my goal tonight with my presentation is to give you an overview of our budget. I know you have in your packet, a little, I think there's three sheets there of details about the library budget for fiscal year eighteen, and I also handed out to you copies of my presentation slides, so you have those for a referral, too. So I'll do the overview, I'll also try to give you some context, both sort of historical context of the budget, but also context in terms of how do we use this money, what happens with all of it. My other goal is gonna be to get us out of here in the two-hour time that, that Jim talked about on Monday. I'm not, I don't know, we'll see, see how that goes, but I'm gonna just jump right in and talk about expenditure totals. So this just gives you that context historically of where the budget's been at for expenditure totals. You can see, I added a few lines in there. The up and down line there is a few months into fiscal year seven, so in November two thousand and six, we moved into our new building. You can see that the, the horizontal line there shows that fiscal year eighteen expenditure level is the same as it was in fiscal year seven, so eleven years ago, same expenditures that we had then, and in that year that we were between buildings. Now, I, I don't need to go into the part of the story, you've heard me, I'm almost ten years now, I've been coming, so you know, in the last ten years, that while expenditures are, are flat to oh-seven there, that they are equal to that, that our use level has gone up dramatically since moving to the new building, and the type of use that we see has gone up and changed. So I won't go into all those details, 'cause I know you know that already. Another way to look at the expenditures is to look at the percent of change over the years. I did the last few years here, so you can see the couple of years where we took a very deep cuts in our budget. And, and then you can see, then fiscal year thirteen, just last fiscal year, that we had a two percent range increase in our budget. Same thing this year, fiscal year seventeen, and we're looking at the same thing in fiscal year eighteen. So if there's a theme for our budget this year, it's, it's steady, stable. We are not asking to do anything but maintain where we are after the cuts that we did. So that, that's really, not trying to add anything new, not looking to restore hours or restore staff, but we'll talk more about that as I go through. But I thought this one showed pretty well, that we're just looking at staying steady there. Another way to look at the expenditures, here again, it shows that little bit of dip, and then shows the steadiness in the last few years. And I also put up there, just so you could see, Jim mentioned, you know, we're not a, a big revenue producer at the library, and libraries just aren't set up, that's not what libraries do. But we do have some revenue, and so you could see what the expenditures are after you take away the revenue that we're predicted to have. And so just a little bit about our revenue, you can see that our revenue's gone up. If you look back there, fiscal year oh-two, I used, but you can see it's kind of steadily climbing, and then plateaued off. And that happened right about the time that we signed ten-year twenty-eighty agreements with the contracting entities. So Des Moines County, West Burlington contracts with us, Middletown contracts with us now as well. And so that's when we put those into place, and one of the things about those agreements is that they were designed to be studied, to have a predictable cost to the other organizations and, and a predictable income for us, and also to be predictable for the residents there. So they knew for ten years, they're gonna be able to use the library and have that stability. I think it was mentioned already that there is a levy for the library, that's part of that, that revenue. Another piece is the fees and fines that people pay at the library. You know, in the perfect world, I'd love that to be zero. Everybody returns their things on time, nothing ever gets damaged, so that, that'd be great. But we did see in the last year that those went down just a little bit. I don't necessarily know that that's gonna stay down, we didn't really do anything to dramatically cut the, the fees that we charge, but we just didn't bring in quite as much. But overall, revenue staying very stable. So for personnel, I'm just gonna keep using that word, I think, stable and steady. We're not looking for any changes in personnel between fiscal year seventeen, fiscal year eighteen. The only little tweak is in our clerks and our shovers. I took a look at fiscal year sixteen, actual hours that people worked, and saw that we needed to adjust that a little bit. But if you look at the bottom line, we're still looking at sixteen point nine FTE being budgeted for the next year, so really, actually, a tiny smidge down from what's budgeted for this year. I did put up in the corner there, though, just as a reminder, that we have lost quite a few staff positions. Five since fiscal year oh-two, most of those happening in the last four years or so. If you, we've always had one director, so that hasn't changed, but the administrative assistant used to be a full-time position. We used to have four full-time supervising librarians and eight full-time library assistants. We also had, and it doesn't show anymore, we used to have a full-time maintenance person. So a lot of our cuts that we made were in full-time staff. So now, if you look at, put all the staff together, there's more part-time people than full-time people working at the library. But this is also, fiscal year sixteen was right around the same amount as well, so we haven't really had much change in, in personnel, let's say, or asking for anything like that. So what do you get? Well, how do we use the, the team, the, the time, the talent of our team members? What kind of responsibilities they have? So this just shows you how we divide out duties at the library. We have three sections. Again, that used to be four, we combined technology and collections into one section. I think around about second year of that now, so I'll talk a little bit more about that, too. So administration, you know, I'm the one, and Sarah is the half, and we together make up the administration piece. Though I always think it's a little misleading, because the truth is that, yes, we're responsible for the administrative parts like budgets and reports and statistics and all that fun stuff, but really, I see my job is facilitating, making it happen at the library, so it's making sure that everybody has the resources they need. It's also doing whatever needs to be done that day, in that moment. So if you would come first thing this morning, you'd see me out there with the salt on the sidewalks, you know. So whatever needs to be done in the day, that's what I'm gonna do. If you come in, you're, you're very likely to see me answering questions that helped us, or checking out books, or checking in books. We all really flex around quite a bit to cover what needs to get done. Another big piece of what I see is my, my role, and Sarah's role, is that we are always looking at how can we, how can we improve things? Whether that's improving a process, or it's just looking at new ways of, of doing things, reallocating how we're using people on our teams so that they are in the right place, those kind of things. So it's facilitating and I'm always looking for improvement, and also doing purchasing and all those other things. So the youth services department, when we did cuts to staff, we avoided making cuts in this area of our staffing. And part of the reason we did that is because we had done a strategic plan in fiscal year twelve. We talked to community members, and their number-one thing that they wanted from the library was to serve children, to create readers, was the way their phrase, and I'll talk a little more of that later. But because we had just done that strategic plan, before we were looking at making cuts, we had that as a guidepost for us, to looking, okay, this is really important to the community, so we're gonna try to maintain as much as we can of what we do in that area. So, so not much change there in terms of staffing. So our youth services department, we actually call it youth and family, because so many of the programs that we do, family members come as well. I just was at a meeting earlier this week, and a mom was saying how much she's looking forward to coming with her daughter again in February for, for storytime, they've been missing it this month, 'cause we're in a little bit of a break. So families look forward to being able to come. What we do is, really, we're trying to build learners and prepare kids for school, develop school readiness through all the classes that we offer, and then support learners. And by that, we don't just mean like homework support, we mean encouraging them to realize that learning is a lifelong endeavor. It's not always gonna just happen in the classroom, so the library is a place you can come and learn the rest of your life. Another important part, I think, of what we do for the youth area is that we serve all ages, from babies to teens. And in the last few years, we filled in some gaps there. When I first started working here, oh, almost fifteen years ago, we didn't have a program for infants and families, and we didn't really have anything once kids got into school until they were teenagers, and that we only had sporadically. So the youth services area has really done a lot to add to that. So we now have programs for babies, we have programs for kids in elementary school, kids in middle school, a lot of different services available. And I think it's really serves a great purpose and has an impact on our community in the way that it's a location that people can come to, there's no charge, they can come and spend time with their kids. I worked last Saturday, and I think it was about three, three-thirty, I looked up from the customer service desk, and what I saw was, there's a, there's a man who comes every Saturday, I see him every time I work, with his sons, and they spend some time playing with the trains, doing something on the computers, checking out a bunch of books to take home with them. At that time, he was there, there was a, a mom there, there were like three other men there with children. It was just great to see all these community members coming and knowing that's a place they can come and spend time, and there's, there's no fee involved, and they can take stuff home with them, too, so. So I think that's a great thing. And then also, I think that, you know, it's been several years now, since we've had a teen center downtown, we really have taken that on as a responsibility at the library, to be that place, that safe, welcoming place that teens can come and spend time, or come to some of our programs that we offer. That's why every Thursday night, we have different programs available for teens. So tonight, they're doing a program as we speak. The other section, this is the one that we combined. I guess I should say, there, in the youth area, one of the things that we changed, we didn't eliminate staff, but we did change that we have a youth desk, but we don't staff it year-round. We only staff it for the two months that we're doing the summer reading program. And the reason we can do that is because of the layout of our building. The building really does help us to make some changes based on the efficiency of it compared to where we were before. So in the old facility, the children were in the basement or lower level, adults were upstairs, and so we had to staff two desks all the time. But when we were looking at making those changes, we thought, well, that's one area that we can observe from the main desk, so we don't have to have someone there all the time. The trade-off is, we don't have someone there who greets the kids and their families, proactively approaches them and says, what can we help you find? And, and tells them about things that are going on. Instead, we're, we're there to answer questions when they need it, but we're not right there, looking up to help them at all times, so. In this section, as I mentioned, this is a combined section, we used to have two people in two different sections overseeing this, combined it into one, and we, the technology aspect is really a huge aspect for us. We do our IT on our own, it, it's been that way since I've, I came to work here, I'm not sure why it was set up that way, but we do our own IT, and so we have about forty computers that are for the public area, and then about thirty or more that are at the service desk and the staff desk, so it's quite a lot of computers to, to maintain. We started laptop checkout, so we have those that we need to maintain, and the ones that we use for classes. We also do some classes to help people not just have access to the computer, but then know how to use it. And I was, was just talking to someone about how we have gone away from necessarily having just big classes all the time to doing some one-on-one time with people, if they want to make an appointment for tech things, 'cause sometimes people have very specific questions, and that's really all they want. So fifteen minutes with them answers it, rather than preparing a two-hour class. So those are the kind of things that our, our tech folks are working on. The collection area, when it merged into there, they do all the things from deciding what book to buy to getting it all the way to the shelf. And I'll say that one of the things that I think, you know, we're in our second year with this combined section, one of the things that we find, when we lost staff, is that we were deploying that, redeploying the staff out to the direct service. So we, we need to make sure there's people out there to serve people at the main desk, so we put people out there, and we've taken away from their behind-the-scenes work time. And I think the collections area is one where we've seen that the most, where there isn't as much staff time left to devote to that. So we're still working on finding a balance there, and looking at, as I mentioned, one of the things I love to do, process improvement, looking at ways that we can improve the process, other things that we can do to make that flow better, now that that's a combined section, and something we just don't have as much time for, so. Our other section focuses on community and customer service. So these, this is the section of where the focus is on the customer service desk and the help desk. So it's the circulation of materials, checking things in, checking them out, registering people for their cards, answering questions, sometimes that's tech questions, sometimes it's local history questions. We get a lot of people who are interested in that, and it's, you know, unique to our area, so we're happy to do that. A lot of times, it's job-related. We have a lot of people who come in and need help setting up an email, uploading things to- things to an online job application, um, or help with looking at their resume and helping them format, different things like that, so we do quite a bit of that. Um, we, um, also, under this area, do a lot of promotion. So, this area is responsible for our newsletter, for our social media, um, getting the word out about what we have to offer to the community. Um, and I think a couple of the things that they do are ones that, um, aren't as well-known, our homebound delivery service. So, when people aren't able to get out anymore, we will customize a package of materials for them and, um, we have a volunteer group that will deliver them. Um, we also will go to other libraries to find materials and bring those in through our interlibrary loan program. Um, and that's a, that's a very, um, well-loved program, but maybe not one that is everybody takes advantage of as much as they could. We did just recently, one man who loved it so much gave us a hundred-dollar donation, um, to help pay for the postage for interlibrary loan, because that is, there is expense involved in, um, making that happen, even though the other libraries don't charge us for the materials. So, that is the way that we use our, um, our staff. The other section of our expenditures budget that I wanted to pull out and look at is our operating expenditures. So, that's everything else but personnel. Um, and that encompasses things like building expense. Um, so, we pay for the people that clean our buildings, so we don't have a maintenance person anymore, so we contract that out. Um, we also use property maintenance. Um, we had a couple of the guys at the library today, um, and we've really enjoyed working with them, been great. Um, we pay for the specialized software here that we use, um, so for doing interlibrary loan, for cataloging materials, the checking in, checking out, inventory, all those things, there's specialized software for that. Um, supplies, staff training, and then also, all the materials we buy for the collection is all in this figure. So, um, again, I put a line in there so you could get a sense, um, of the context where we're at. Um, you can see the big drop-off, so as we were making cuts in, in personnel, we were also making cuts in our operating expenditures. Um, and as you see from that line, back in two thousand and four, we had more, um, funds in the operating expenditures than we do today. Um, one of the reasons why we can do some of that, again, goes back to being in the new building, um, there is some greater efficiency, um, available to us, so, um, so that's been very nice to be able to have. Um, but we've also looked at every little thing, um, down to, we changed our vendor for janitorial supplies and some of the products that we use. So, we've made lots and lots of changes there. So, in terms of our collections budget, um, which are, kind of one of the main things that we do, buying materials and checking them in, checking them out. Um, you can see that this, for fiscal year eighteen, it would be about seventy-two thousand dollars. And fiscal year thirteen, before we had cuts, we were at over two-hundred thousand dollars for, um, collection materials. So, we, we really pared back in this area significantly. Did a little chart here, too, so you can see where that, how we kinda divided that up. Um, we cut back the adult materials the, the heaviest, um, and really tried to keep more in the youth area. Again, that was the number-one thing people wanted, was serving youth. Um, and then we also have our online tools. Um, we provide, you can download books and, and music and, um, you can magazines, so, lots of different tools there, online tutoring, all those things I've talked about when I was here for the annual report. Um, and then also subscriptions. Um, we do offer magazines for all ages, so, give you an idea of how that money gets used. So, one of the things, when I was here for the annual report, that we talked about is how much, um, we now do in terms of classes. So, we have a lot of classes and events. Um, we've always done classes and events, we've always had storytimes, things like that, but it's become more of a draw for people, um, as we've become more of a community destination, more of a community center. Um, so, same numbers that you, you saw last time, um, but I did go ahead and put in for you here, an average attendance, um, so you can see how that, how that looks. Now, I've been, keep talking about how we're really looking at, in this budget, to maintain and to stay steady, um, and stable with what we're doing. When we talk, when I talk to staff members about the classes, one of the things we talk about is, we are not looking to offer more classes. More isn't as important to me as having them be more impactful. So, we wanna look at every class that we offer and say, okay, we know wiggle time is very popular, we offer it five times in the week. Um, and, and so, we know we wanna continue that, but we wanna look at the other things that we offer, um, and see, are, are we getting enough people coming? Is there the interest? If not, let's not do that one. And put focus into getting more people to the classes we already offer. So, um, one of the things that we've been working on is getting more consistent in our promotion of every activity that we have. We have our monthly newsletter. Usually, I would've brought you a copy, 'cause I'm always handing those out. But also, just making sure we get things into the Friday fax and just wherever we can, so people in the community know what's here. And I would more, I'd be more excited to see our participation numbers go up than the actual number of classes to go up. So, we're not looking to increase the classes, but to improve, um, and make sure that they are fitting the needs and fitting the outcomes, um, that we want to see. And one of the things, though, to think, you can see, we have a very different in terms of per-event attendance from youth to adult. And part of that is because a lot of our adult activities are classes, like tech classes, and you don't want fifty people in a tech class, it's too much. You know, you really need to keep some of those smaller. Um, even with youth classes, you know, if wiggle time, we try to do about twenty, twenty-five kids and their families. If we went to forty or fifty, it'd be chaos. You just can't, you can't do that. So, so you need to keep the classes smaller, and that's why we offer multiple sessions of those, um, instead. Now, when we have a magician come, sometimes we have three-hundred people there, that works great. But, um, but for some, you know, we just don't wanna get them too big either. Now, the other thing with classes and events is, we do not have any funding in the budget for the supplies, the speaker fees, any of those kind of things to hold those, um, events. So, what we do instead is we turn to our Friends the Library group. And for a long time, that has been, um, a big part of what they do. Now, I'll put in a little plug, because tomorrow night, they have their trivia night fundraiser, and on the twenty-eighth of this month, they have their next book sale. Um, besides doing those, they also do, um, they have the footnote shop that's open every day that we're open. Um, so, they put in a massive amount of volunteer hours, um, and raise money that they then turn around and make available to us for things like our seniors program that we do once a month, and we bring in outside speakers, um, supplies, food for the teen events, 'cause that always helps if you have food for the teens. Um, but I, I put up a picture here, too, of our Ticos group, um, with our new pot machine, um, just to show that not only is our, our Friends the Library working to raise funds to pay for the class supplies and things like that, so we don't need to ask for that in our budget with you. Um, but our teen group, which stands for Teens Inspiring Change, Optimism, and Service, they're really getting out there and trying to do some service things. They work with the Optimist Club, they're, um, and they go out and put up flags, you know, at Flag Day and Memorial Day, Veterans Day, they do all of those. So, for every flag they put up and every flag they take down, the Optimists give them a dollar. Um, and that all goes into their programs, so it helps to pay for snacks, um, at their programs or pay for a speaker to come in for them. Um, they ca, they came up with the idea themselves of wanting to have a pot machine at the library. Um, for them, our coffee shop closes at two, they can't get there till after three usually, or on Saturday and the shop's not open, so they wanted to be able to have something to drink. It is bottles with a lid, our policy is, you have to have a lid, so, um, no cans, but, um, they wanted to get the pot machine in and they did. Um, we worked with them on that. And now, the, a portion of the cost, um, if you pay, if you get a Pepsi at the library, um, goes back towards the teen services. So, um, so we have some wonderful volunteers who are putting in, I say, a lot of time and effort to, um, to make those classes possible. Now, Jim spent some time talking about the capital improvement plan, and I, I say this every year, you won't see us, we're not in the capital improvement plan, um, when you go through that list by department. This doesn't mean that we don't have any capital kind of needs. For one, we don't have any vehicles, so we're grateful to our, our coworkers and other departments who let us borrow their vehicle if we need to go out of town for a training or a meeting or something like that. Um, but this is the area where we would turn to the Library Foundation. Um, the Library Foundation was, so the Friends group, just to explain between the two, 'cause I think sometimes it's a little confusing. The Friends group, um, they do the fundraisers, they do the book sales, they do those, the footnotes. The money they bring in for that, they then turn around and give back to the library throughout the year. They are not doing long-term investment. The Foundation developed out of the Friends, um, and the Foundation started because they wanted to be able to do, um, long-term investing, um, looking at stability and sustainability. And so, they invest their funds into long-term vehicles, and then, the interest that they receive or the, you know, income they get from that is what they then have to work with in terms of giving funds back to libraries. It's sort of like the endowment, talking about, um, creating endowments. They don't like to dip into their principal at all because that's meant for the long-term and to invest for the future, um, but when they, their annual earnings, then, we can talk to them about making donations to the library. So, just to give you a sense, last year, they gave just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's a hundred thousand dollars that we did not have to come and ask you for, um, as part of our budget. Some of those things they've given for have been, we had some damage to a roof, so we had to get that fixed and they took care of that. A lot of times, they give for our building issues and technology. So, um, we have a wall that needs repair at the library, um, a little damaged by the, um, parking lot, and, um, it's not nearly as expensive as the walls Nick was talking about on Monday, it's much, much cheaper than that, but, um, more than we could afford to absorb into our, our, um, budget that we have, um, for building repair. You'll, you'll see, if you look at our items, it's not that big. Um, it's more for very small things. So, we went to the Foundation for that, and, and that repair is gonna get done, um, starting next month. Um, we also, last year, updated the software on our HVAC system. Um, after ten years, more and more things need to be updated, um, and that came from the Foundation. We're currently updating the public computers. All the public computers are a thin client system that we've had for ten years. So, you know, technology, ten years is a really long time. So, we are getting a new system for that, and again, we turned to the Foundation, um, for that. They just, actually, I met with them on Tuesday, was their, they meet quarterly, and, um, they gave the funds for that. So, um, they anticipate another year of giving us about a hundred thousand dollars. In the future, I, um, you know, we're at ten years, so I know the carpet, maybe we'll get another five years out of it, but at some point, we're gonna need to replace carpet. Foundation is, is where we would go for that. So, that's why you don't see us in the capital improvement plan. Um, the Foundation is there, um, to support some of those needs. So, these are some numbers you saw when I did the annual report. I just wanted to, to end with talking about what the impact we have in the community. Um, so, you know, and the way that we use our, our staff, again, of their time and their talents, um, to offer the classes, to answer the questions, to help people with the technology and to serve all those visitors that come in, as well as check-in and checkout materials. Um, I did a little calculation, um, that four-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand collection use includes some downloadable, includes database collections and things like that. Physical collection-wise, it's probably about four-hundred thousand. Um, and so, if you take that by the number of staff that we have, full-time, FTE, um, you get an average of twenty-four thousand items per person on the staff that we check in, that we check out, and we put back on the shelf. Um, so, there's a pretty high volume of what we're doing throughout the year, um, and a really heavy use by our community. Meeting rooms, as I mentioned before, another really, um, big area, keeps growing. Um, just put up a typical month schedule, say, I, I should've brought the January newsletter, I usually would, would do that, but at least I had this in here. Um, on a, a typical month, and usually December would be not so typical 'cause of, um, holidays, but there's something going on every day for people in the community to come and do at the library, um, if they want to come to a special event. Of course, they can also come and just hang out, they can use the meeting room, they can, um, check some things out, so there's always something to do. Now, I mentioned before, our, um, strategic plan, this was in two thousand and twelve, so, it's been five years. We are having someone come in, um, and start to meet with the board next month about starting our next strategic plan. Um, but when we did our strategic plan, part of the activity for the community group was to determine what are the many things that they want from the library. So, the six things you see here, create young readers, satisfy curiosity, which just means lifelong learning, um, connect to the online world through technology access, visiting a comfortable place, um, knowing how to evaluate, um, information, and, um, discovering heritage. We do have a really nice, um, genealogy, local history collection, a lot of people appreciate. So, um, I think that's a lot, so I've always narrowed that down to just four things, youth, lifelong learning, technology, and community. I anticipate that the new, um, strategic plan will have very similar outcome, um, just because the way I see people using the library and the things I hear from the community, um, that they like and that they use, um, the library. The other thing that's coming up for us, um, in fiscal year eighteen will be re-accreditation with the state. The state has a nice big book of standards, um, that we get to, um, try to meet and fill out the whole application, so we'll be doing that. So, it'll be, um, again, going back to that, that theme for our budget, we're really looking at study, stay the course, um, but also, at the same time, looking at what we're doing and evaluating what we're doing and making sure that it fits our community's needs. Do you know, our, our mission is to create opportunities for people of all ages, and, um, we really do serve people from all walks of life in our community, and I think it's one of the great things, things I love about working at the library. Um, and it all comes back to, is all the departments, um, work together to make this a great place to live, work, and play. So, ah, I went over. I was tempted to peek earlier and I didn't, but, not too bad, right?
You can blame it on Jim.
Okay.
That's right, 'cause it's Jim's fault.
So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, then, that you might have. I say, I know you have the details there of some of the things, um, if there's anything you wanna ask about from that or from the presentation, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
I just wanna say, uh, um, our, our library is, uh, second to, I don't know, you know? Um, it's, uh, it's very well-run, your, your staff is, uh, phenomenal. Just wanna throw that out there, we've got a, we're really blessed, we've got a really good library, good programs. Every time I go down there, the kids welcome me, they treat me like I'm one of them.
They love having you come. Thank you for coming last month, by the way, and reading.
Thanks for inviting me, but, uh, good library, it's a excellent library. I just wanna throw that out there so people understand, um, some people still don't, uh, go down to appreciate the library because that's just not the, uh, the era that they're in in their life. Uh, that being said, the people that do utilize that, um, it's, it's phenomenal, uh, it's a phenomenal library, just throwing that out there.
Thank you. And I, yeah, I'm glad you, you, you mentioned that because I, I had meant to say something more in my presentation about how much we owe to the staff, um, because a lot of these, these cuts and things that we made over the years, um, they've been great, and they've been creative and supportive and really hard-working and very flexible. Uh, we keep moving people around and, and cross-training them in different things to try to make the best use of the time that we have and the talents that we have, um, and so, we really owe them. We owe them a lot. We do get people who come from out of town, sometimes, you know, um, bigger communities, smaller communities, I saw somebody came from Florida and said, oh, your library's so much better than ours. Um, and so, we, you know, people notice, um, but I do always, um, I know you mentioned some people who don't come down, um, and I, I always wish I could just like go around door to door and say, let me, come, come on down, I'll give you a tour. Uh, because I do feel like those who don't come, um, there's probably something for them at the library, they just don't know it yet. Um, so, invite your friends, bring them with ya.
This is, um, not to you just directly, but it, you got my phone message, I hope. You know, uh, this is really directed to the whole staff. This is not really gonna be sustainable if we're gonna try to maintain the same, uh, tax levy from year to year to year. It's just not, not gonna work unless we get some cuts and some sacrifices from somewhere, and I'm glad to hear you talk about the, the staff being a whole team, but, uh, so it's not anything personal, but you have some plan, I hope, in case you don't get your two-point-three-seven percent increase.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I, I wanna say, from, from experience, it's something I think about a lot, um, is what do we, what will we do? Our, yeah, for one thing, I, I should say, that for the library, um, our process is, the library board is actually ultimately responsible for what, how our expenditures are. So, um, in terms of what I would do in that, um, that event is to work with the board. Um, so, they really would be the ones telling me, um, how they want to, to make that happen. Um, I always will, you know, give ideas or help work with them on that, but I, I would turn to my board and work with them, um, on a process if we had something like that. Now, you know, you know, 'cause I just gave my presentation, then we've had a lot of deep cuts in the past, um, and have, have cut things in all areas, so, finding more to trim would be very challenging. And I think we, we looked, when we made the cuts a couple of years ago, um, we looked for things that'd be least impactful on our customers and on the community.
Right.
There's really nothing there anymore that's, that's not going to have an impact. You know, we've really turned that back to, to where the, where, where, anything we would do would have, would have an impact. And even having, even if we were to say have a flat budget, not have any cut in what we currently have, but go have a flat budget, that's still, you know, it's only 2.3 increase, but, but it's $32,000. And even, you know, that would be hard to take a look for in our budget. But I would certainly work with our, our board and see what we could, could do. I mean, I, I would certainly hope that's not the case, but I totally understand where you're coming from.
Rhonda, I've got to say this, just because, because I, I have to say this, but this is the, this is the complaint that, that I'm getting coming from. I still have people complaining because a position was just hired for. I believe it was, I want to say it was for, I want to say it was for a shelve. This is, this is the, I got a text saying, don't forget to bring this up. I want to say it was like a shelve for 18 bucks an hour or something like that. I, I know, I know those numbers cannot be right, but that's a, that's a big concern in the complaint with, with people in the community when they're saying somebody that, that is shelving, I'm not saying that, that's not important. But, you know, there's people that are, the complaint is there are people that are doing way rougher jobs that are, that are making less money. And, and that it seems like for some of the menial, more menial positions, it seems like the pay is a little bit on the upper echelon of the scale. That, that's the complaint that I'm getting, so I, I want to, I want to give that to you because I always tell them, hey, I don't, I don't set the pay, I don't do that, you know. I have no part in that, but that, that's a concern.
Well, it's not a shelve position. Our shelvers make in the $7 range, so just to clarify that. I, it's 750, something in that, in that range is our starting for our shelvers, so that, that's not a shelve position. We do have an aid position that makes closer to that range. And I would say, I don't really set that either, those are union positions and that, that's what they're set at. So I understand what you're saying, but I do want to clarify, that's not a shelve position.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Rhonda.
All right, thank you.
Could I just mention with our strategic plan? Could I just mention with our strategic plan?
I'm sorry, we, we don't know who you are.
Jerry Parks, 2729 South Main. Strategic plan process coming up, the model we're using involves getting a diverse group from the community to sit down and work with the facilitator and come up with, you know, make some choices and develop a plan. We think it's going to be like one Saturday morning, a kind of a, you know, get-together. And we'd love if, if any of, of you all are interested in helping set the direction for the library for the next five years, we'd just be delighted to have you join us. No date has been determined yet, but we'd be happy to get one for you.
Thank you. Counsel, are we good with the library?
Yep.
Jim?
Thank you, Rhonda.
Just a couple of things. Our next meeting, budget meeting is next Thursday at 3:30. Police and waste water treatment plant slash solid waste are on deck, depending on how timing works and how long Chief does. If he takes as long as I do, it may make it kind of tough, but. It's a challenge to take that long, probably.
Sounds like the gauntlet has been thrown.
OpenGov on our website, right now, it, it, it's where it has been for finding it. Our budget data has been uploaded onto it. To find that, to go to our main website, you have to go under Departments. Well, where it is right now, you have to, if you go, you have to go to Departments and go to Finance and it's on that page. So she's showing how you would toggle to it to get it on our website. And can you see some of the questions that are on there?
You can, look on that, please.
Do you want to come up and just talk so that you talk through it rather than me?
Actually, that works out really well, I was looking at it today, so it does work well.
At the end there, you can see the 17, 18 preliminary budget is out there, so that's all the information you guys have and will get. And then there's questions over here, if you want to click on one of those, Eric, I mean, it'll bring up graphs and give you information. So then, two, you can click over on the revenues button, I believe, if you click on that, it should list the different kinds. So you can actually drill down, so then if you want to look at like, say Backfill, go to intergovernmental revenues because that comes from the state. And then if you go to state grants, you can see the different items that you can look at. So you can click on like replacement tax and it'll show you for the, for the general fund what we're getting or what we've estimated that we'll get. So just because you clicked on a question, you can go further than that if you want to.
Okay.
Okay?
And then what are you trying to do for tomorrow?
And tomorrow, I'm going, can you go to the front page of the website? To make it easier for other people to find it, because it's kind of buried, you kind of got to look for it. So if you click on the Burlington, click on the Burlington, Iowa logo, yeah, okay. If you scroll down a little bit, right there where it says fiscal year FY18 budget meetings, I'm going to put a link there that should link you right out to OpenGov then, okay?
Good deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I was kind of wondering, Steph, we handed out a lot of information in regards to our CIP plan, broken out by department and by funding source, is that look, is that viewable from the website or no? And are we going to get that out there? So do you think that would end up under Finance Department as well?
Here's where we had the CIP plan last year and the preliminary budget is where we had it out there. I don't know why we're not able to see it now, but this is where I was thinking we could put it.
So we'll, the CIP plan may end up getting attached within the, the OpenGov platform. Otherwise, it'll be under the Finance tab so that people can view that. But as we figure out where that's going to go, we'll let, let you know. You do have a copy of it, but for people to be able to review, get to it, we want to make sure that they do have that ability as we move through the course of these discussions. So, any other questions or thoughts or comments?
I, I do have a couple. There, there, Matt Murray was here earlier and he was on his lunch hour from his business and, and from where he works now. And he called me and expressed to me some concerns about the, putting the Depot white boxing and moving it out to fiscal year 21. It's obvious if it doesn't happen in fiscal 2018, he's not going to be there to, to, uh, do his development. And I, I'm, I'm a little concerned with that too. I think we've got a momentum going at the library now with the investments that the city's made and with the investments that, I'm sorry, to Depot, with the investment, what did I say?
Library. Library's jamming too, but go ahead, Tim, go ahead.
Too many, too many thoughts going through my mind. The, the Depot, the momentum that we have going right now, I, I hate to lose that we have a number of individuals that are wanting to invest in a restaurant. I mean, Matt, Matt Murray's the principal guy, the, the driver of that, but he's got investors that are wanting to make some investment. There seems to be some question as to what the city's willing to do and what, what Matt and his investors believe is necessary to be done to, to have the white box to the point that they need it to be able to continue the, the, the moving forward with their development. So there's, and Matt's not here to talk on his side, I can't speak for him, I don't know. Nick can come up and speak from the city's side, but I think they need to sit down first and come back with.
Nick, why don't we, we'll go ahead and finish, but let him come and talk what's, what they have done with it, but go ahead and finish.
Uh, come on up. Uh, my only thought was that they, setting down very, very soon and determining where that line of demarcation is of to what needs to be done in the white boxing and coming up with a true figure. How do you respond to that?
What we did for the white boxing is I met with Jesse Casson and then our own building inspectors on what would be necessary to get the building to a, to a base level, to have anything function out of that building, which meant new gas service, new water service, new electrical service, and unfortunately, new plumbing. There is existing plumbing that probably ran underneath the building, but that has been disconnected for years. So in my proposal, I had to try and get plumbing to the lateral. We currently, we did a lateral not too long ago through the middle of the parking lot. The easiest way that I saw was to create a lateral out in the grass area and run it back across our parking lot. Other than that, I, I met with Mark Chicken Dance and went over what Jesse Casson and then the building inspectors talked about for bringing electrical 200 amp. That's fairly minimal, given if you're bringing any sort of.
For a restaurant, that's.
It's pretty minimal, but it, it's pretty basic, so if anything, that dollar figure should go up. Bringing in only replacement windows where necessary, replacement doors.
Only where necessary?
There is three doors currently. One would be absolutely needed in the front for access, but then also one in the kitchen. The third one was kind of an optional. That dollar figure is, is fairly minor. But the biggest thing is bringing the utilities over. And I think the biggest discrepancy that Matt and I had was the lateral for the sewer. After discussing with Braden, I don't have that dollar figure, but I can get it to you if you'd like to look at it. I have a breakdown, I, I have a breakdown of my numbers that I used. But the biggest thing is, is the 20% contingency really threw a fairly decent dollar figure on top of what the estimate was. Just for a safety factor on, on what I've experienced seeing the Depot project, you know, different little change orders come here and there. I, you know, I, I figured that one, I'd rather be safe than sorry. I put 150,000 as the, you know, in his earlier discussions, he had estimated between 70 and 80,000 to white box the facility. I don't know where his numbers came from, but he did email me yesterday to see if we couldn't sit down and go over the numbers. But I haven't had that opportunity to meet with him.
That's what I, that's what I would like to see and I think that's what he wants to see. And I promised him that I would bring that up tonight and, and try to get you guys together before we get to a point where it's too late and can't do anything. I mean, if it's, if it is what you say it is and, and we can't do it, either he's going to have to come up with a different plan or he's going to have to rethink his investment, so.
Well, I really hate for an opportunity like that to just dissolve.
Annie, you're, I took it when you asked the question earlier about economic development, this is what you're talking about?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And I know that that would, at the figure of 150,000, it would deplete that balance drastically. But if it's something we feel strongly about and think that it would be a good thing for us to do, you know, developmental, economic-wise.
We've been, one thing with that fund is we've been pretty consistent in going to the Economic Development Board and asking for their, for their input on that. And been pretty consistent on, on taking their advice, but I had the same note written down that that's one that we could look at. But I, I think from the conversation I had with Matt, they're willing to pick up some of that cost for the, for the white boxing. So that's, needs to enter into that figure too.
Yeah, and I think there's some discussion to be had too as time goes on, that the Friends of the Depot is trying to figure out where their fundraising efforts are, where our final costs are on the main Depot project and if they have a balance left over and how they can work that with other projects down there.
And, and I know that they have other projects even within the great room that they would like to do with different, you know, different seating and, and awnings and, and different things within the great room. But I also know that they, they would like to see, you know, someone succeed in the former greers spot. I don't know what that means to them money-wise, if they'd be willing to help contribute to that. Don was here, but I, you know, I've never had that conversation.
Well, and he has some other spots that he'd like to develop out for other things too.
Correct. And this is just a thought, I, I haven't, potentially could condominiumize the north end and sell it off to him. I don't know how that would work necessarily, but, you know, you, there, there is that option. I, there's probably some hoops to jump through, but.
If I get a little woozy here, it's because when that was mentioned to a staff member before, that's not here, that's no longer employed with the city, it was mayor, we can't do that, the federal government paid for our roof. That was the end of it.
Condominianize it, I think, still allows us to maintain what we, I, I think that we'd have to check with the DOT.
We'd still retain ownership of the outside of the building, so that would be where I would have a little bit of a discrepancy with that statement, but.
Well, it's, I, I have total discrepancy with that, how long can, how long can a federal agency hold a gun to your head because they put a roof on your building 30 years ago?
It depends on what building they did and what kind of.
What federal agency it is.
It, it sounds like we have a lot of options really, and I, I'm really optimistic about somehow, I think we should be able to do that, to be able to white box it with, whether it's a combination of all these efforts or even, you know, the other options.
As far as the white boxing numbers go, I feel fairly confident that I would rather prefer my numbers over, over, over a lower number. I'm not saying it couldn't be done for less than 150, but for a budgetary device, I would be nervous about inserting, you know, 110, 120,000 and then doing the project and then being partway through it and realizing that you, you have a shortfall.
I, I agree, but I, there's, there's some, like I said, there's some things he's willing to do that was part of what you were expressing that you would do or that the city would do. So, you know, so the, the, there may be, there could be a change in that budget. The numbers would be the same, but who pays for it is where the.
I think, I think we need to hear back from you. I, I would imagine that he's going to be reaching out to you here within the next couple of days.
He did, he did, he did last night at about 8:30, but I didn't respond to it till this morning. So I wasn't available, I had a couple of meetings today and then this, so. No, I, I was hoping tomorrow or next, early next week, I could have a conversation with him.
I think that you need to have a discussion amongst all of you as to your general willingness to fund a project like this and just to make sure that all of your thoughts are heard on that too. To me, I'm hearing general support, but I don't hear full support. So I think you need to work through how you're talking about that part too.
I'm willing to let them have their conversation in here.
I'm willing to hear it. So, and I, I want, before I can support it or, or argue any further, I want to know those answers to what I've already said. I mean, if we're, if we're back to 70 or 80,000, there may be a, a funding source that we can come up with for, for that. I, I just, it's just the idea that when you have momentum going in a development like that, I just hate to see this lose that momentum. But I don't want us to spend more money than we can spend either, so.
Okay.
Did they find out why the roof is leaking?
Brockway was up there, the, with all the ice and water on there currently, they couldn't, they couldn't ascertain why. After Braden and I talked about it, we went and looked at it. We honestly think that there was moisture in the roof before it was redone. And with the, the new HVAC system coming online, we think that it actually melted the moisture that was already in the existing crack. But we'll, we'll hold, we'll hold the subcontractor and the contractor who put the roof up to make sure that it's corrected if there in fact is an actual real issue. We probably won't be able to determine that really until spring.
Thank you, sir.
I had one other thing I wanted to bring up.
Yes, sir.
The 75,000 that we feel we're going to be short in the, in the Rexplex. I think in the future, it was brought up to us as, as they were making the sales pitch for the indoor Rexplex, that they were, there was a willingness on the part of the local hotels and motels to do a voluntary destination, uh, surcharge on hotel motel fees. I, I don't know why it wouldn't be appropriate for us to ask that. why it wouldn't be appropriate for us to ask that that be a part of their plan as well. I mean, we've, Burlington stepped up many years ago and took this, took this project on and, to the, to the betterment of those facilities, to a significant betterment of those facilities. I don't think it would be inappropriate of us to at least ask if that's how they plan to do that funding to help with this, I think, rather minor shortfall in our budget. And it's, it's been a bony contention for people, even though it's been, you know, pretty minor. I don't think it would.
I don't have any problem with that.
That's all I get.
Those'll all be fun discussions.
They're laughing so delicious.
I just would like to say, I mentioned Community Field, the forty-five thousand we have in there in hotel motel for stuff. It is just utilities and then their association fee that amounts to sixty-three-hundred a year. But I was thinking three things, and it's just because we have three line items. We have light and power and one line item, and heating and fuel and a second one, so.
That's it.
But otherwise, I don't have anything else. And hopefully have a good weekend. Anyone has comments, let the council know.
That's right. Just wanna throw that out there again. If you do have any comments over tonight's work session, please send us an email. Let us know right away what your thoughts are on this meeting. We'd love to hear from you. But again, I'm telling you, don't, don't wait till the midnight hour.
Yeah, I'll be in bed.
There's nothing else? May I could do anything?
Good night.
Thank you very much.